I think it's time. Brian, would you leave us in your invocation?
Our headman's father, thank you for this day and for many blessings. Praise you just reside over this meeting, bless our council, bless our members, and we pray.
Misty, would you leave us in the pledge?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody move the flag.
Keep your toe up.
We're a patriotic council, but some of us were saluting the Arkansas flag. Or pledging our allegiance to it. All right, let's convene our meeting. We'll start with roll call, Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorden.
Here.
Marty Lindebury.
Here.
John Collins. Deena McKnight.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Anthony Foster.
Here.
Our city clerk and city attorney are both present. First item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I do have two amendments to add. One, Christie passed out a resolution to you guys prior to the meeting. It's Resolution 2025-04. I would like to add that to number three under new business. And I would like to add to old business a review of the Verizon contract. Verizon came to us a while back about a cell tower, actually a while back, several years ago. Better wanting to revisit that, so I would like to put that under other business. Do I have any objections, questions, or motions concerning the adoption of the agenda?
You went on old business or other business? Said old first.
I'm sorry, old business.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept it with the amendment second.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from January 14th. Do we have any changes, motions?
I make a motion, we accept them.
Second. Motion in second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
That motion is approved. Next is our public forum, do we have anyone who would like to address the council tonight? Hearing none, we'll close the public forum and move into our business reports. First, Planning Commission, Walter Harnish.
Good evening. I don't really have much of a business report. We did not meet last month, lack of agenda items. And as far as I know right now, we don't have any for this month yet either, so who knows if we're gonna meet or not? We are, so good deal. We do need to start discussing how we want to start possibly amending Title 15 of the code. That's where we're gonna get going with Juliette Ritchie next. And we'll just start setting the schedules for that and start moving forward. Any questions?
Glad you had some downtime.
Yeah, right, it's been kind of weird.
A while.
Been a little bit, yeah. Our meeting's coming up on the 20th.
And you're gonna have a couple of items before you. I'm trying to think of what they are, though.
I know at least one lot split, possibly two, and then...
There is.
Right, well, we'll get the emails.
Anyway, yeah, you're gonna have, oh, there's, yeah, there's some lot splits on Al Hollow that we need to look at.
So it might just be two lots splits.
That may, that may be what it is.
Good deal.
Yeah. Also, Walter, and Tom may know something about this as well, but there was an email that came out yesterday regarding the state is looking to pass a new law regulating states' ability to regulate short-term rentals? Have you seen anything on that?
Looking to preempt city's ability to regulate.
Yeah.
Yeah, they took a run at it last session and got close, it came in hot this session. And they're trying to get something passed right away. Municipal League is, are they really fighting hammer and tong to keep whatever we can?
And I looked at the bill and it didn't look outlandish to me.
So blanket?
No, not necessarily.
It was a blanket preemption to start with, I'm not quite sure what it looks like now.
Okay, yeah, to me, we wouldn't necessarily need to change anything with our current ordinance that concerns that.
Right, I was gonna say, we don't have much in the way of...
It, it looked like it was Arkansas trying to protect tourism, saying that Airbnb attracts tourism. And I guess some cities are just trying to flat-out deny all short-term rentals. That, that was the idea I got from reading it, but there's still...
Occupancies on there.
Yeah, there's still several protections for cities in it, I thought, so.
Yeah, okay. You drank the bitter tea of, of, of big, big short-term rental corporations. What they want is all regulation out of the way. They want, they don't want to go from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, especially when you hit one like Bella Vista, Fayetteville, you know, Bentonville now, where you need, you know, you really want to sell a lot of rentals. And they do things like, gosh, they want you to have a marked emergency exit. You know, how offensive. You know, there are cities that do things like they want sprinkled and they want extra parking space. And you can see where that, you know, but tourism was up again last year in Arkansas like it has been even somewhat during COVID. So it, it may be that, you know, those big corporations that make a lot of money from the short-term rental business want to sort of have a uniform. I, I look for an attack on zoning itself this session that I think the, under the guise of affordable housing, there's going to be legislation to, they're gonna call it something like Uniform Zoning, so that, you know, all the cities will have to have a certain kind of zoning ordinance. We'll see how that goes.
Right, sounds, sounds like a big bite.
Hope you'll forgive my editorializing.
Great, okay. Thank you, Walter. Next is a court report, Tracy.
Well, we're just doing what we always do. That's all I'm gonna say, y'all have your report. But I got this in the mail today and I'm really excited about it. Since I finished my certified court manager program, so I was like, well, at least I have something nice to share.
That's right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions regarding Tracy's report for the certified court manager?
Okay.
Nope, thank you, Tracy. Next, library, Marie.
Hello. So from last month, we've been holding fairly steady, although we had record numbers last January, so it did drop. And I felt kind of bad about it until I found out how many people were sick around here over the last month. And I was like, well, I hope everyone is feeling better and that they start coming to the library this month. So tomorrow, we have Charlotte Museum presenting Murders of Kane Hill. And that's gonna be at 3:30 PM. Next Wednesday, Nancy Starr is going to be in town and she's going to be teaching how to protect your wooden items in the kitchen by using a mixture of like beeswax and mineral oil. So there's actually going to be a little bit of hands-on with some cutting boards that she's going to be bringing that were donated by a friend of hers. And also, at the end of the month, the whole family is invited to Book Bingo, which should be a lot of fun. One of our patrons, Nicole Hood, is going to be bringing snacks and she is going to be doing the bingo. So if you would like to win a book, or if you have a family member who would enjoy that, please come to the library on the 28th. And then this Friday, our mayor is going to be answering questions again on Ask the Mayor on Facebook Live. This time, I also included the number of faxes we sent this past month and the number of print jobs, not the number of pages we printed that I counted when I was going through our numbers, because I thought that that was another interesting thing that we do at the library that gives people access to computer resources that they might not otherwise have. And then our storytime numbers, even though everything else has fallen a little bit, has remained up. I will say, though, last year, we did have full disposal, only two storytimes in January, but I still felt like this was a really cool improvement, so we were excited about that.
Absolutely. Any questions for Marie? Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Police Department, Chief Halliburton.
Good evening, everybody. All right, for the month of January, we had a total of 264 calls for service. We wrote 27 citations, issued 38 warnings, had 29 warrants served, no felony arrests for misdemeanor arrests and one property complaint. That puts us down about 40 calls from December, which is, as the holidays tend to drop off, so do the calls, so does the call volume. We also were able to, Officer Pitts and Raider were recertified as K-9 in Dogwood in January. We did, we were able to pick up our new $20, $25 Durango. We've got that out in the parking lot, waiting on the upfitting equipment. We'll have that all upfitted and hopefully on the road here pretty soon. We have one vacant open officer position. And we are starting to schedule interviews next week for that. There's one more thing, I was trying to write it down, it ran out of my head, haven't been able to bring it back yet, so don't know what to do with it.
I'll send us some of that, too. Any questions for Chief Halliburton? Your son, have a good birthday?
That's Sunday.
Sunday, okay.
Sunday, he'll be 18, and headed closer to getting off my payroll.
Yeah, right. All right, thank you, sir. Public Works, Isaac.
I'm busy. We're chasing water leaks, hot and heavy, I think we fixed five last week and we fixed about nine for the, for the last month, so we've got four more located, so those guys are, I've got guys coming in at 2:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning and going meter to meter, listening on every meter, trying to find them, so. So hopefully, we start cutting that water loss down. Our usage is still up, so the only thing I can, can think of that'll account for it is just the dry weather through the summer and now it's saturated and turning loose the line, so. I do have a dump truck found. We're trying to work through the process of getting it bought, it's in Cabot. We did the credit app today, actually. So hopefully, I got that in the next couple of weeks. And as soon as it hits the ground here, it's going to toss it to get a plow put on it, so. It's gonna be a little bit under our budget that we had, so that'll be, that'll be nice.
That's good.
The sidewalk is done.
Looks good, looks awesome.
Waiting on a couple more people to come look at the asphalt patching before we are totally done with it, so hopefully, we get a good day or two and I can get somebody down here and patch it, it'll be totally done. Homestead is done. Everything is hooked up. They were playing up the last yards, they thought they were gonna be done this week. We will do a walkthrough on Steep Creek's portion and turn them loose. And then we have a pre-construction meeting with MindCo about the, the closeout plan. They still have a start date, because I don't think they have all their paperwork still yet from AEDQ, so so once that's in place, we'll give them a notice of award to, to start. And then I think, I want to say their contract was 120 days or something like that, so. So then now go in, tear up every yard again and clean it up as they come out. And then we kind of just took, took some of the contract price off and we'll sod yards as needed. Most, there's not many sodded yards in there, but you know, when people see a mini X, their yard's sodden, so. 170 Bridge, it went from zero to 100 in the last two weeks. We got put on a deadline to turn our, our proposal in for moving utilities, so Zach Johnston at CK Engineering, I've been going through that. He put together a proposal, we're gonna fine tune it and probably turn that in towards the end of the week. And that's, that's a big, big project, so. You want me to go in more detail on that?
I think if you just drop the number, that'll be enough detail for everybody.
The number, the, the contract number that, this is for a contractor coming into, it was $1.6 million to move all utilities, with 1.1 of it being our portion. About $550,000 was reimbursable from RDOT, so we think we can shave some more of that off by moving some stuff around, but it's, it's gonna be close to that number. We can get it down further if we can do a lot of the work ourselves, but there's some of that I'm, I'm not equipped to do. I don't have enough boots on the ground or, or the equipment to do, so we're gonna have to contract some of it out. And y'all have all driven down Robinson, you know what's right there on your right-hand side when you turn down there, that's all rock, so that's all, any utility that goes down through there is gonna be jackhammered in, so there's some, there's some rough digging through there. So. Yeah, I am not likely to do that either.
Fill some holes and...
Yeah.
So we don't know how we're gonna pay for that.
Obviously not.
So more to be discussed in the coming future.
Sounds like the near future.
Near future, yes. Christie made an interesting point. If it costs 1.6 million just to move the, the utilities, just the water and sewer utilities, what is that bridge gonna cost? It's gonna be a major project.
Well, that, they sent that out to all the utilities, like the brand-new gas line they just bored under there, it has to be moved. All the telecommunications that's on the bridge now have to be moved, so they'll have to be bored underneath the creek. Electric's already turned their proposal in to, to move all their stuff, so it's, it's everybody. Everybody's gonna move.
Nobody had the foresight to think this might be a problem later?
Isaac, what exactly are we moving?
We're moving water and sewer.
Water and sewer, that's all.
Any, anything that's in the right-of-way or going to be in their new proposed right-of-way has to be moved out of the right-of-way. If they are changing the right-of-way and taking us, taking our utility into their new right-of-way, they reimburse us for that. But if we're already in their right-of-way, we pay 100% to move it out, which most of our stuff down there is in the right-of-way.
And is there any, and I know we can dig into this deeper, but that's all gonna be turned over to West Fork.
Yes.
And so that's gonna be West Fork's right-of-way?
Yes.
It seems like we would have a little bit of...
Well, I don't, and Tom may know more on the partnership thing, I don't know if those officially become ours or if we just maintain them for RDOT. And if 50 years down the road, they want to put an interstate through here, they've already got part of the right-of-way. So I don't know that that'll ever...
Once they start using it, they can use it forever, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how they work, that's how they operate.
So it may be ours on paper, but it, it may still be theirs.
Got it.
Okay.
I'm sure they'll be glad to have us know it and make it look pretty through.
But they won't let you put a sign in, you know, to get word that you put a sign or did something through it, they'll come.
Really?
I don't know, I haven't visited with Prairie Grove, because Prairie Grove now owns or has 62 highway through Prairie Grove, so I don't know how that all works, that might be...
I mean, they let, let Fayetteville plant trees up the middle of Highway 71.
Fayetteville took that, they took it off the, they took it off the books.
Is that not what we're doing? Or are we just in a partnership?
Yeah, I'm not, I think, I think to do that, Fayetteville had to say, this is no longer gonna ever be that.
It'd be fun to take more trees everywhere.
I think.
Okay, well, we'll cross that bridge soon.
Yeah. The only other thing I have is, is we've had a couple of sewer backups behind Easy Mart on the Dogwood portion coming down. We had, we had to get a plumbing company down here to wash that line. So they come back encambraded at Forest, it's full of roots, so it is in terrible shape. So we're just gonna replace that line segment through there. It's got a bunch of big hardwood trees on it, and we're just gonna replace it, so.
You ever take the trees out?
I don't, well, we're gonna dig up through there. If we kill a tree, then yeah, we'll have to go late and take it out, but we're gonna try to dig up through there and just cut the roots and hope for the best. So it's 290 feet, not in the street, so it shouldn't be too bad, so.
Okay.
I think that's all that.
You said you fixed several leaks, have you found anything very big?
Nothing big.
So what you think is over on 71, you still haven't been able to?
Yeah, and that guy that I had here doing the leak detection, he's having some software issues. He can hear a leak, he just can't pinpoint where it's at. So we, we know we have a leak on Centennial up there around Charlie Brooks', but we just can't pinpoint it. And of course, now there's water in every ditch you look in, so.
Right.
So we, so we're really counting on him to get us close and let's start digging and just find it, so.
So part of what's coming before planning is three houses on Al Creek?
Oh, on Al Hollow up there.
Or Al Hollow, yeah, I'm sorry. Do we have plenty of water for that?
I believe we have plenty of water out there, yeah.
Anything else for Isaac? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, y'all.
Parks Director Harrison.
Well, January's a pretty rough month for us. We, we weather and have illness and things, but we mainly concentrating on getting ready for ball season. We did our sign-ups, our registration for our season, rec-ball season opened. Deadline right now is 21st, probably be extended, but my, early March, I'll have everything wrapped up and turn teams organized, I hope. But we've been working on the facility and the high school fields mainly, because they're, they've already practicing down there. Their season starts the first week of March down there, so we've been working on just, just getting the facility and the fields in, in shape and ready. And for the most part, we're getting there, we're, we'll be, we'll be good to go. We are doing a little dugout modification on the high school baseball field with the help of the high school baseball team. They've, they've done most of the financial cost of that and pitched in and helped do some of the physical as well. And then the softball team, she's got a sponsor to buy a windscreen and put on the softball field like we did the baseball field last year. So that's been ordered, hopefully, it's gonna get in, we'll get that in, maybe next week, but, but before their season starts, for sure. And yeah, that's, we've just mainly been working on that when it's, when I've been there and when, when it's not bad weather. Our gravel lot, the paving, the asphalt paving that we budgeted for to get that done, the bids went out and Christie put the bid minutes in there, so you can see what the bids were. APAC was awarded the bid. And they're going to start this week, depending on the weather. Hopefully, be done no later than early next week and the Striper will come in right behind that. So we, we hope to have that project finished and ready within the next week on that. Parks Committee, I am gonna get a meeting scheduled towards the end of this month, make 4th of July, mainly to, to make some 4th of July decisions, set dates, talk about our, our budget for the fireworks show and things like that and make, so I should have some definite dates and decisions next month on our 4th of July event. We start early on that. And also with our fireworks paying early, we get a big discount as well, so we're gonna get those decisions. And we're gonna get on the books and get, get the schedule, so we'll make sure that, that we have them secure. I know the mayor told y'all last month that, because I wasn't here, that we did purchase a truck. We were able to do that with our 2024 budget. We replaced a 10-year-old, the, our oldest vehicle, that was starting to have a few issues and we were able to sell it at a fair market price as well, so. And then also, I know he informed you I did hire employee, Dwayne Boyd started the first year and so far, I think he's, he's gonna be a good hire. He's, he's a, gonna be a good asset for me and just like TJ was, he's gonna be an asset to some of the other city departments as well. He's been, I'm, I'm missing time. There was bad weather, he's already put in some time with TJ, especially a little bit with Isaac as well, so I'm excited. I'm gonna miss the one I had, but he's a good replacement so far.
Probably a step in the right direction.
That's all I got.
Any questions?
I'd say that even if TJ wasn't here.
I would have too.
I, I go, I go see him and still ask him, hey, what do we do about this? What do we, what do you think of this? So I'm still leaning on him a little bit for parks and parks, but.
Good.
Anything?
No? Okay, thank you. Next, Fire Department, Chief Howard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Month of January, January was pretty busy for us. Had 107 calls. Last January, we were at 85, so we're up a little bit. We had 14 fire calls, five of those were residential structure fires. Guys put in a lot of time and effort in the last month. Along with that, we're gonna start keeping track of training hours. Just so that you guys know, we put in 263 training hours last month. As we go along through the year, we hope to have those training hours several thousand throughout the year. We have a good group of folks, we just gotta make sure we're training in the right areas. We've got a new setup for that and I think it's going pretty well. As far as our fire prevention that, that we've started doing, Captain Weisenhund, he has completed 14 commercial inspections in our district and been on 43 first visits for all the businesses in West Fork and Greenland. All of that's gone really, really well. Been very little pushback from anybody. Everybody seems pretty okay with us being there, so. That's about it for me.
They gotta be okay with you being there, don't they?
Well... They don't have to be okay with it.
Yeah, they do.
We're gonna be there, but they don't have to be okay with it.
But it's getting a lot better than the, the first initial ones.
Yes, yes, yes.
Good.
So I did get a text yesterday or today asking if Travis was truly a captain at the fire department, that he'd came by letting someone know that he wanted to schedule an inspection and...
Have a scan alert?
Yeah.
It's been going pretty good. Do you have any questions about the item you added to the agenda?
We'll get to that later, let you come back up again.
Thanks.
So kind of along with what TJ's talking about with the inspections, we are looking at a complete, eh, not a complete rewrite, but a rewrite of our business license ordinance. And part of that is going to have some verbiage in there that doing business in West Fork will necessitate a yearly, an annual fire inspection, so that just kind of comes along with it. And so making that a little bit more prominent to everyone, once we get that ordinance finished. So currently, me, Christine, Isaac, and TJ are working on that, that ordinance. And then we'll be getting it to Tom and to the council shortly, and we'll be making some other changes as well. But that, that's one of the changes that we've been wanting to, to get in, that some better definitions of what a business is and some different things, but we'll have that soon. All right, thank you, TJ. Next, the finance report, Christie.
Hello. So finances started off very interesting for January.
Uh, so finances started off very interesting, um, for January. If you look at the treasurer's report for the city, um, we have three departments that are already over budget for the year. Um, but they, I think they will even out. Um, we had some very large purchases, um, all the vehicles that have been approved for the year were already, have already been purchased. Um, the police department not only has purchased vehicles, but they've had a bunch break down, so there's, budget's a little wonky because of that. Um, but I do think it'll all even itself out. It's just very unusual for it to see it be that out of balance for January, so. Um, the sales tax number also looks off balance a little bit. We're showing a twenty-seven percent increase in city sales tax from this time last year. Um, I double-checked that number like three times because I kept saying there's no way that's right, um, but it is right. I think, um, West Fork did a lot of Amazon for Christmas. Um, so I, so I don't foresee that being a trend, um, but we should have a, a very good uh, sales tax distribution for December. Um, on the water report, you'll see, um, that we did, I did want to point out, because Isaac and I was frustrated about his water loss number, but that number is actually lower than it's been in three months, so he is making some progress, even though it's not the big numbers that he wants to see, they are making progress on it. Um, and then on the uh, bottom down there, the income versus expenses for sewer, um, if you compare uh, this January to last January, were about fifteen thousand dollars, um, to the good from where we were last year. Um, we collected from Fayetteville, I believe they had about fifteen houses that we collected from in Homestead, um, that we actually got the check for in January, so I foresee that number, um, getting even better. Um, on the Homestead, um, I have talked to Kenneth Cox, which is on their board and takes care of their financial, or has been in charge of their, of the bond. Um, so he has checked with the county. The county has taken the home improvement district, um, off of the county tax collection, so the property taxes, or real estate taxes, won't have that on there anymore. He is trying to get, um, a refund from the bank, it's Bank of Ozark. Um, that is who we paid our hundred and ninety thousand to, and then the HOA was supposed to pay, pay the remaining. Well, when he went to do that in December, they told him that he had a credit. Um, so he's been trying to work with them to find out exactly where the credit came from. Originally, the bank told him that that credit ended to go back to the homeowners because it was for property tax. Uh, when he was telling me that, I said, back up, because if that was for property taxes, it's from twenty twenty-three. So therefore, since we paid the bond off, that needs to come back to us. So he's trying to get some verification on what he's supposed to do with that credit, but it looks like we should have about forty thousand dollars come into us from the HOA when it's all said and done, that we can put back onto, um, the bond. So that's the update on Homestead. Um, other than that, we did, um, ask for, uh, request for qualifications for engineers. The deadline for that was yesterday, so we have a large stack of those to review. We'll be bringing that to the council next month, um, to choose our engineer of record for the year. Um, the mayor mentioned that we're working on business, the business license ordinance. Along with that, Amanda and I are also working on getting all of our, um, applications, whether it be for business license, funding, building permits, um, anything that we have an application for, we're working on getting those put online so that they can all be done electronically, keep people from having to come to the office, just make it easier on customers in general to be able to, um, get those applications in. Um, Marie has also offered to help us learn how to build and maintain our own website, so that's something that we're gonna be working on. I'm gonna lean heavily on Amanda, um, to do that, um, but we are excited to be able to have a website that we can go into and make our own, um, revisions on it. Gail has done our website since we've had one and she does a great job. It's just always a constant, keeping a list of things so that I can send her three or four things to do at one time instead of just every day being able to go on there and make whatever changes we want. So I think it'll be nice to have something in-house that we can just update whenever we need to. And so that, we're working on that. Um, we are also working on updating all of our job descriptions, our salary ranges and our personnel policies. So the first couple of months of the year, we're gonna have a lot to do. Any questions?
We get any kind of adjustment for that one, sir?
We did not.
I ask every month.
I don't expect you.
Oh, it's fine.
Anything else for Christie? No? Okay. Thank you, Christie. So that concludes our business reports. Next item is our procedural motions. We don't have any ordinances on the agenda, so we don't need to, uh, we don't need any procedural motions. Next is old business, and we had moved the Verizon contract to old business. So you guys have that beside you. Nothing has changed on this that I'm aware of from the last time we looked at it. Uh, and, and so where we are on this, the last time we talked about this, we voted in, we voted to approve this, that we would, we would lease this property to them. Uh, the last time we voted to do this was the second time that we had voted to lease this property to them. So, um, a little bit of aggravation, uh, from my perspective, uh, this was supposed to have started four years ago, five years ago, uh, something, something in that, along those lines. So Verizon has reached out again and said that they would like to move forward on this.
So it'll be the same price as it was five years ago?
Well, nothing has changed in the lease.
Okay.
So I'm not saying that it's a bad project. I was for it when it first came out. Uh, it's not that I'm against it now, I'm just aggravated with Verizon that, in my opinion, at seventy-two hundred dollars a year, uh, we've lost about forty grand, uh, waiting on them. I just kinda feel like we've held their spot.
Have you told them that?
The, the property that, that's down there, that, that they wanna put this on is, is still in the same shape it was. Right, it hasn't, it hasn't been an effect, hasn't had an effect on West Fork and what we're doing. Uh, there's still talk of, of somebody potentially trying to, to buy all of that property across from the school and maybe have an exit, uh, through that property over there. This isn't gonna affect that if it happens, so.
Has any other company shown interest?
No. What it, what it is, Anthony, is Verizon has a dead spot down here in the valley. And so that's, they have came to us specifically saying, hey, we know we have a dead spot in that valley and we would like to get a, a tower positioned in the valley. So it, it's just them. Any thoughts on the council?
Have you told them that we've lost forty thousand dollars?
No, I haven't told them that. I will though, if you'd like for me to.
Well, I think they should be aware. That's a lot of money.
It is.
I just, in my mind, I think if I was gonna lease something five years ago, it was gonna be six hundred dollars a month, it'd probably be twelve hundred dollars a month now if I waited that long to do it.
Yes.
Yes, they're lost. I mean, they are the ones that drug their feet, so, and we, you know, we agreed to this amount back then, I don't think that's fair now.
So the only, the only question I have on that is, city attorney, are we locked into this lease since it hasn't been executed?
So I'm not, it'll have it from here right now, but my initial answer is gonna be, no, if they haven't paid anything on the lease, then it, it's nothing sort of more than an option, but.
We haven't even signed the lease for that one.
No, we haven't. We just, we just, we approved to move forward with it, so I just wanna make sure that.
We haven't executed it, no.
The, the only question I would have is the seventy-two hundred a year, is that still a fair market or has, you know, rent and that sort of scenario went up?
That's right.
If it's, if it's went up, then I mean, we might as well not give them a deal. I mean, pay the fair market value, they can pay us the fair market value for that.
I mean, it has gone up definitely. There's no doubt it's gone up. I mean, just check around.
The way you figure out the market for a tower is you have to compare it to other tower leases in the area, right? You, granted, certainly the cost of the property is factored in, but you also wanna know, imagine Perryville Farmington, certainly those two have, I think they have Horizon Towers, don't they?
I'm sure they do. The, the question is gonna be, can we find someone who has put one up recently? Because historically, the cell phone towers have been a smaller value lease and the, the yearly increases or, or the five-year increases are typically a smaller amount than, than other leasing projects, so.
If it's been five years, they're due for.
Fayetteville District, you, we should find out.
Okay.
I'm trying to get the information to you.
So is, is that how the, the council would like to move forward on this? We're still interested, but we would like to get, uh, maybe an updated appraisal of, of rental fees, lease fees?
Maybe.
Yeah?
I think it'd be wrong of us not to at least ask.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that at all. And everybody saw the diagram on the back, they're wanting, I don't remember how many feet it was, but it's not a large amount, a large area, uh, sixty by sixty compound with a hundred and fifty foot, uh, just a, a tower, doesn't have guy wires or anything on it, right? Isaac, I think it's just a, just a straight up, it's in the air tower, like a telephone pole mostly.
Monopole.
Yeah, monopole, yeah.
But once it goes up, it's not gonna be removed for.
Right, it'll be there for foreseeable future. That's right.
It's only fair to look at the right amount and start off.
Okay. So does the council want to perhaps make a motion to allow the mayor to renegotiate the price for this lease?
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Okay, so we'll, we'll try to find some, some current contracts, uh, that have went in to base that on and then bring that back to the council with an updated lease before we move forward on that.
Preferably a bigger print.
There's an extra set of readers up here if you want me to talk.
That's probably not bad, Jim. I could read it, but, you know.
All right, uh, item D, new business. The first item up is resolution two zero two five dash zero three. Uh, this is an allocation of sales tax to Parks and Rec. So the city of West Fork currently allocates one percent of our sales tax. We have three cent sales tax. We do one cent to, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, for their yearly budget, maintenance of the parks. The what's, what the city of West Fork has done since this was enacted is they've put a ten-year sunset on this, so every ten years, we get to discuss it. And I think that's a good thing, it's not a bad thing. Uh, but that, that sunset, uh, is, it sunsets in February, so this month. And we need to decide how, how we're gonna move forward with it. Uh, Parks and Rec's budget is set for twenty-five, so it's not, we're not affecting that, uh, but we need to decide, do we want to re-up this? Uh, and I think we do. But that's the council decision.
I make a motion, we've passed resolution twenty, twenty-five dash oh three.
Second.
We have a motion in second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Uh, if it would please the council, I would like to skip to item number three and get that out of the way and then we'll come back to the reading of the state of the city. Is that okay with everyone? All right. So item three is resolution two zero two five dash zero four. Uh, Christie put this before us, uh, and what this is, is we would be, uh, voting to pass this resolution, allowing TJ to, to seek out an Arkansas rural community grant for the Fire Department. Uh, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
I like it.
It's not bad.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second, we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash five.
We have a motion in second to approve this resolution? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Now the moment we have all been waiting for. So it is my pleasure each year to take this time to read the state of the city of West
They get longer than here.
They do. Uh, you know, we're accomplishing more every year.
It's a good thing.
My, my summer goal is to put together a timeline of everything we've accomplished in the, the last eight years. I think that's gonna be cool to put together, so. Anyway, West Fork completed many of our stated goals set for twenty twenty-four. I am encouraged by the momentum we are carrying into twenty twenty-five. Throughout twenty-four, we continued to see more citizen involvement with city projects and planning. Our team of employees has remained dedicated not only to their respective departments, but also the city. The city had, could not have asked for a more dedicated group of employees who committed to staying safe while also striving to better our city functions. The treasurer's office twenty twenty-four report, uh, highlights significant financial operational changes within the city throughout the year. Cash balances experienced a decrease of two hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred, primarily due to the purchase of three point two acres near Riverside Park and the acquisition of a new fire truck. In contrast, the water department saw an increase in cash balances of a hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and concluded the year a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over budget. Overall, the city exceeded its projected budget by a hundred and ten thousand two hundred. Sales tax revenues showed growth with city sales tax increasing three point eight percent and county sales tax rising three point five compared to twenty twenty-three. The city also recorded progress in economic activity with fifty-five active business license, five more than the previous year, and the issuance of nineteen building permits and sixty HVAC and plumbing permits. The Parks Department has maintained efficient operation and care of our parks facilities, programs and events in twenty-four. The department, with assistance from the Parks Committee and other city departments, has been able to maintain, upgrade and improve our park system throughout the year, and we just increased your ability to do so. Upgrades to our park system included the completion of new restrooms at Carter Park, the installation of two new scoreboards at the ballfields, a new bullpen area, outfield fencing screen added to the high school baseball field, new metal roofing was installed on the concession stand building and score, score booths at Carter Park, as well as all pavilions at Riverside Park. We made a major change to our annual Independence Day celebration by allowing food trucks to join the festivities, which was an overwhelming positive addition, helping make it one of the most successful events to date. The Parks Department's Tree City program gained Tree City USA recognition for the ninth straight year, and we continue to work with other city departments, committees and organizations throughout two thousand twenty-four to improve, enhance and unify our city. The Police Department in twenty twenty-four has been very productive. The following is a summary of the accomplishments of the Police Department and our goals for twenty-five. Fully staffed with three part-time officers and several auxiliary officers, the department staff completed sixteen hundred man-hours of training. Year-to-date calls were four thousand ninety-seven. The department issued four hundred and fifty citations with the top three, four hundred and forty-nine warrants served, thirty-six felony arrests, forty-two misdemeanor arrests. The department issued eight hundred and twenty-five warnings and issued twenty-seven related, twenty-seven charges related to drunk driving. I hope the warnings weren't, uh, related to drunk driving also. S R O, S R O contract, Sergeant Goggins, uh, contract to remain with S R O at West Fork Schools was renewed. They participated in the City of Lax parade, the West Fork parade and the trunk retreat. They secured a fifty thousand dollar step grant for seatbelt DWI, extra traffic patrols. Shop with a cop was able to provide Christmas presents for twenty local children. They started and equipped a K nine unit. All officers completed required state training. Officers completed six hundred hours of training for the year. They updated SOPs for the department, created a review process for best practices, purchased and equipped a new patrol vehicle and purchased six Glock forty-fives with holosun optics. Goals for the year for twenty twenty-five are to continue the SOP reviews, continue the process for Arkansas State certification, replace old ballistic vests and hold public classes on police citizen encounters. Public works, the street department had a busy year moving, mowing as we took on the West Fork Cemetery to help their struggling board that runs on donations. The street department was able to get Smith Street. The street department was able to get Smith Street widened, paved before years in, and complete most of the sidewalk project along Main Street funded by the ARPA. In 2025, goals are to get sidewalk along Smith Street between Clark and Center Streets, creating walkability for the new Rolling Plain subdivision, as well as paving portions of McKean Avenue and Park Street. The water department completed the replacement of sewer main on White Street, consisting of nine-hundred feet of main line, five new manholes. The department also removed an old two-and-a-half or two-and-a-quarter water main along Smith Street, thereby connecting Smith Street residents to the new eight-inch water main installed for the Rolling Plain subdivision. The department also managed a major sewer main project in the Homestead subdivision, replacing the old step system and allowing all the houses to be off pumps and gravity flow to the West Fork's transmission line. This project brought eighty new customers. In addition, we also added three new services within the city along with five water taps. The department continues to GPS the entire water and sewer system to build a future mapping system that can be viewed online. Twenty-five looks to be busy as we are planning to move water and sewer for two bridge replacements scheduled by RDOT, as well as continued maintenance on both water and sewer to combat water loss and INI. At the library this year, the West Fork Library continued to develop relationships with community groups, onboarded two new members of staff, added additional programs to meet community needs, and began an in-depth evaluation of our collection. Our new youth services library in Lindsay Lloyd has started a second storytime for infants to twenty-four months. During storytime, children have a chance to develop early literacy skills, while caregivers also have a place to connect. We have around eleven-hundred attendees, including caregivers. We have created a parenting section that is easily accessible to adults coming in with young children. We continue to be grateful for the involvement of our community. The Good Earth Garden Club and Master Gardeners planted the plants donated from the Master Naturalist in the BioSwell. We received a generous donation in honor of Judy Gray from her children. I can't pronounce that club. Also received a grant to create a pollinator-friendly space at the story garden. That's a lot, that's for butterflies. We were invited to host the Schmiedling Center's dementia support group for family and caregivers in November. We are excited that we have been asked to host more in the new year. We look forward to seeing those changes and additions in the new year. In '25, we look forward to developing programs to engage our community, enhancing our collection to meet the needs of the community, and cataloging our special collection items currently stored in the meeting room. At the fire department, they had a wonderful year. Our call volume reached nine-hundred-and-sixty-two total calls, with a hundred and seven of those being fire calls, seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine being rescue assist calls. West Fork had the third highest call volume of the nineteen county fire departments behind only Prairie Grove and Farmington. We logged a thousand twenty-three hours of training in '24 and hope to exceed that number in '25. We received a new fire tanker that was ordered in '23. This addition to the fire department expands our response capabilities. Chief Myers announced his retirement effective twelve-thirty-one of '24, after eight years as chief and twenty-five years with the department. The department and city wish him well in retirement, thank him for his service and commitment to the department and community. The department has also promoted TJ Howerton to the position of West Fork Fire Chief, and we look forward to many years of great leadership under Chief Howerton. At the court, '24 was a productive year. We went from two full-time clerks to one full-time and two part-time clerks. Many hours were spent training and revising our procedures, and we are working on task distribution. We continue to digitize our office by scanning boxes retrieved from paid storage and began working on processing documentation. We plan to have procedural manuals for week-to-week processes in place by the end of the year, and we'll strive to get procedural processes for every now-and-then task as they come up. Court clerks attended multiple training sessions throughout the year and continued to build relationships with other district courts in the state. Chief Clerk Tracy Revkey completed her third and final year of court management program and is now an Arkansas Certified Court Manager. We worked three thousand and eighty-five city cases, a thousand and eighty-seven trials, nineteen-hundred-and-ninety-eight arraignments, eight-hundred-and-eighty-six county cases, three-hundred-and-thirty-three trials, and five-hundred-and-fifty-three arraignments, and twenty-seven-hundred-and-seventy-two state cases with eight-hundred-and-seventy-six trials, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six arraignments this year. Additionally, a hundred and twenty civil cases were filed in the court in '24. There were five-hundred-and-thirty warrants issued, three-hundred-and-fifty-two were failed to appear, a hundred and seventy-four for failure to pay, and four affidavits. A hundred and fifty-seven were recalled and four-hundred-and-fifty-five were served. Sixty-three of the recalled warrants were city warrants, and two-hundred-and-twenty-four of the warrants served were city warrants. Okay. As you can see, '24 was a very productive year for the city of West Fork. Our revenues increased at a greater rate than our expenses, we added new homes, and each department was successful in attaining many of their stated goals for '24. With the success and achievements gained in '24, I'm encouraged and excited with our vision and goals set forth for the coming year. That is the state of the city of West Fork for 2024. It does, a lot of achievements happening. I can't wait to see a timeline just to see how much we have accomplished in a period of time. That brings us to other business. Does anyone on the council have any other, other business? Deana? You look like you're thinking over there. No?
I'm thinking, but not...
Oh, gotcha.
Not that needs to be shared.
Okay. We'll leave that there, and we'll move into the mayor's comments. So item one on mayor's comments is, I would like to reschedule the April meeting to either that Thursday after our regularly scheduled Tuesday meeting, or to the following Tuesday.
What's the date?
Thursday would be the tenth, Tuesday would be the fifteenth.
So, Thursday the tenth, or Tuesday the fifteenth?
I'd prefer Tuesday.
Tuesday the fifteenth?
Thursday. Are you going to be busy then?
No, we'll be a slow day. Are we all, are we all okay with Tuesday the fifteenth? Regular time?
We're getting adjourned.
Yeah, I'll find somebody.
Okay.
We'll shake a tree.
Okay. So we're going to move that meeting to Tuesday the fifteenth, Kristi. Additionally, January was a pretty busy month. I had a great meeting with Mr. Hunger, the superintendent of West Fork Schools. The schools has some exciting projects coming forth in the next couple of years, and I'm excited about what the school has planned, what they're looking at, and I think they'll be making some announcements probably shortly of what some of those things are, but you guys have heard me say it before, that the school and the city were kind of an arranged marriage. We didn't pick the school and their leadership, Anthony, TJ, and they didn't pick the city and our leadership, right? But we still have to work together, and what's good for one is typically good for the other and vice versa. So, meeting with Mr. Hunger, he has a lot of energy, a lot of good ideas. He's really came into the position of superintendent. I think he's hit the ground running and he's not ready to stop yet, so I'm really encouraged by what the school's looking at. You know, when investors come, or developers come into the city, that's one of the questions they ask, is what's going on with the school, what kind of population enrollment do they have, different things like that. So I'm really encouraged by some of the things he's working on. Isaac gave us a bridge update as far as our timeline for getting our utilities out of that right-of-way. That's been, that's coming in a lot quicker than what we thought it was going to come. They're still planning on bidding that bridge in '26, so it's not necessarily an increase in the timeframe to get a bridge quicker, it's just, we weren't, we weren't prepared that they would be wanting the utilities and stuff moved this quick. So, how in the world we're going to pay for that, I don't know, but we'll figure something out. I'm confident that we'll figure something.
We'll get it all moving, and then I'll move the date back.
Probably.
Yeah. Don't say that.
And so finally, the last thing I have is, I met with yet another developer that's looking to come into West Fork. This is somebody that hasn't talked to us in the past, so somebody brand-new that's coming in, looking at a couple of projects and a couple of properties. We do have a new commercial property coming in. We're pretty sure that's coming. I think, is that going before planning? Was that the other item, Kristi?
I think that's one of the lots.
They're going to split that, so right there at Arvest Bank, they're going to do a lot split on that property and build a commercial building. We think it's a tobacco store.
That's what we've been told.
So, a portion of that property did sell, it did transact, they're going to split that front piece off. The idea is that they're still going to do residential behind that, and so they're still talking to TJ and Isaac on plans and how all that's going to look, but a new commercial space is great. A commercial space selling retail, whether it's tobacco or anything else, is a sales tax generating retail, commercial space, so that's, that's a good thing, right? Last thing you want is an accounting office in here, they don't generate anything, right? So, so that's good news. And with that, I would entertain a motion...
Can you remind everybody about the chili supper? I have the dates, are the dates on the table?
Twenty-second, five to seven.
So, elected officials chili cook-off. I don't know how many of you guys got the invite to participate in this, but I did, and now I realize why. So, I knew that this was a fundraising event, and I thought that John wanted me to cook some chili and for you guys to come and donate to eat my chili. No, sir. John has gave me a sign-up sheet to make sure I'm in, and also reminded me that I need to make my twenty-five dollar entry fee check, who to pay, who that's payable to, and when he needs it. So, maybe the chili's free for everybody else, and I'm providing it and paying for it.
It's ten dollars.
It's ten dollars, okay.
Where's it, does that again?
Is that the community center?
No, elementary cafeteria.
Elementary cafeteria, oh, okay.
And the proceeds pay off delinquent lunches at the school.
Yeah.
And that's the twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
Yeah. So, elementary school cafeteria, five to seven, Saturday the twenty-second.
And I'm a judge, so if you want to...
Another twenty-five dollars.
I think it would be the other way around. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn. I'll second.
Motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
This motion is adjourned, or this meeting is adjourned. I'm adjourned.